Call the meeting to order, I want to welcome everybody here, I'd like to call on Counselor Penner to bring the opening, please.
Thank you, well, it's been a hectic couple of days for the news cycle. First, our incumbent Mayor of 12 years announces he will not be seeking reelection, followed up by two councilors announcing they will be running for Mayor. Although we are not certain of the outcome, we are certain there will be big changes come fall. Thank you to Mr. Mayor Gertson for your leadership over the past 12 years. It is not easy being in the public eye, particularly on a municipal level, as it is so close to the people we deal with on a day-to-day basis, but you've handled it well.
Thank you.
As for the mayoral race, it is exciting that people have a choice for the next Mayor of Steinbach, particularly because there are clear differences between the two current candidates when it comes to spending, as their voting records indicate. I'm looking forward to finding out which direction taxpayers of Steinbach want to go. And this opens up at least two spaces on council and will hopefully encourage people to run for city council. For those who have been considering running, go for it. Take a chance, win or lose, it is essential for the democratic process. In fact, I think people who run in an election and lose don't get the credit they deserve. It is a risk to put your name out there, and yet the whole system loses credibility if there are no both winners and losers. In closing, it is already shaping up to be an exciting election come fall, and I for one can't wait to see how it all plays out.
Thank you, Counselor Penner, for your comments, and I for one am enjoying going through enjoying those sidelines. I've always said, there's nothing like watching politics when you're not quite in it.
Yeah.
So we'll see. But thank you. All right, council, we do have the agenda in front of us, I'd like to propose a slight change, and that move number seven up to number four point, uh, four point five, actually five point five. Can I have a motion to approve the, uh, the, man, I'm losing my, my words already. A motion to approve the amended agenda. Counselor Funk, seconded by Counselor Fair. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. All right, we have business arising from the minutes, and this is just a clarification, and Mr. Workantene, I ask you to just briefly do that. A clarification in regards to variation file 2018-03. This is on page six. In fact, Mr. Workantene, what I'll do is, I will summarize, and then you can correct me if you, if you'd like.
Sure.
And that is, at the previous meeting, we had a motion to approve, and it was defeated, but we did not have a motion to deny which was not approved. So we need to approve if we want the same intention to move forward, we need to have a motion in regards to that variation to deny to move forward. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that is standard procedure when there are particular circumstances like that.
Thank you. So council, our intention is obviously clear with the previous council meeting, but to be more clear in the minutes, I'd ask that we then have a, a motion to deny for that specific variation. Is there someone willing to move that? Counselor Fair?
Someone to that.
Seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, just for those that maybe are not clear on it, there was a request to, of council to grant a variance for, of, to 15 feet front yard on a property on first street for development, and so the motion was made, and it was defeated, and so we need to make a motion now to deny the request so that we can finish that.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Siemens?
Yes, sir.
Anything further from council? All those, call for the question, all those in favor of deny. All those opposed? Thank you. Just carried. Mr. Workantene, was that correct?
That is now complete.
Thank you.
I would ask, though, that, Ms. Mayor, that council now consider the minutes?
Yeah.
Of the previous meeting?
All right, thank you. Minutes for May 1st, I need them accepted as amended with this new variation. Counselor Siemens, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Thank you. All right, let's move to our delegation, and we have Staff Sergeant Lenega here, thank you for coming. I'll ask you to take the podium, you're here to just give us a brief update.
Yes, thank you. I'll be referring to the stats as provided for January 1st to December 31st, 2017. This is timely in that I believe you're discussing our annual performance plan tonight, so I'll also be, just when I speak of the stats, I'll be mentioning them in terms of your priorities. So one of the priorities being traffic. So I'm kind of pleased to say that impaired driving is down from 62 in 2016 to 2000, to 44 in 2017, and I say kind of because by no means do I believe that we've then put a stop to this problem. Impaired driving continues to be an issue in our area, it has already been this year. And I can tell you for the entire area that I'm pleased we're still, or that I'm responsible for, I suppose, that we're still around 62. We've been there every year for about five years, we've been between 60 and 62. So while I'm glad to say that impaired driving's been down, at the same time, by no means I feel we've conquered this issue. Traffic accidents, so those are the ones that we're attending, are also down. I'm pleased to see that traffic offenses are up from 567 to 744. You know, so with respect to traffic, and I also think that goes a long way towards our visibility initiative, I think those numbers are very positive. Unfortunately, nothing new to report on the traffic section, I know that's something we're all waiting for, and I believe that'll also lead to our visibility initiatives in the sense that even if they're going to Falcon Lake or St. Mallow, or working here, they're going to be driving through our area, and by doing that, there'll be more police officers visible, and I'm hoping we'll even curb some of the behaviors even more. We're extensively, and I'll probably report this at the next meeting, but extensively using MPI funding to augment our own resources, so I think you probably saw on Steinbach Online and the other media outlets that we issued 130 tickets just in the month of April related to cellphone use just within the city of Steinbach. An incredible number, disappointing number, but a number that tells me we just have to keep on using enforcement, it seems to be the only thing that's hopefully going to work. So I think our traffic initiative, you know, we've put a lot of great work into that. The drug enforcement, fairly, you know, consistent, 64 to 57. Our GIS unit, May 1st, has a new corporal in it, and he comes from our headquarters in Winnipeg, a great deal of experience that I think is going to directly benefit our GIS unit. Again, thank you for support of our GIS unit. And property crimes, I'm showing that a reduction in, I think, all categories except for one. Theft unders from 278 to 257. Theft overs from 9 to 2. Break and enters from 91 to 81. Misdrifted properties, the one that went up, and it went up by 1, 233 to 234, and these are a lot of our, sometimes our petty crimes, but I think the victims would never consider them a petty crime, and it's drives me nuts, it's definitely something I'd like to get, you know, get to zero, and that we continue to work at that. Theft of vehicles from 41 to 30, so again, another reduction. So in terms of, you know, your priority of reducing property crimes, I think we've achieved that for 2017, and essentially, that's, that's it.
Very good, thank you. Are there questions from council to staff, our Staff Sergeant? Counselor Siemens, and then Counselor Funk.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Can you speak to the traffic accidents? Seems like Steinbach Online and others are reporting almost on a daily basis on the ongoing traffic accidents that are taking place, mostly on Branton and number 12. Can you, but, but it, our traffic acts are dropping according to this, are these numbers where you need to attend, is that what it is, or just?
Yeah, these are the ones that are actually reported to us, so if they're reported to us, then we have a file open, so you can see, but I can concur that there's an incredible amount of accidents here, and we have initiatives based on intersections, on speeding, on just about everything you can think of, we're trying to do in order to, you know, combat that, but accidents continue to be an issue.
Thank you. Counselor Funk?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend Staff Sergeant Lenega and the staff and the job they do, they've done a great job, and as you can see, many of the numbers are down, uh, many of the incident numbers are down, and traffic initiatives are up. I just want to, I do want to ask, though, we have talked on occasion about meth and the problem meth is having, and how are you reacting, or how are you dealing with that, and how is that affecting our city?
I think it's very much affecting our city, I think, probably at least for several of the last past meetings that I've been coming to, I've identified some of the theft of vehicles, as well as misdrifted properties, as being related to people going, unfortunately, meth is relatively cheap, it's about $10 to be high for a day, it's a long hike, it's about 12 hours, so unfortunately, we are finding that youth are going into vehicles, stealing some cash, stealing, you know, just the petty crime stuff, and, you know, using that for meth, so absolutely, we're seeing the effects of meth within our community. You know, some of the, even shoplifting and items such as that have seen an increase, and that's directly related to, to meth in our community.
Thank you. Further questions, Counselor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have a question, I, I just, as Staff Sergeant Lenega was making his report, I couldn't help but, but feel the, the heartthrob of the RCMP as they patrol them, they, they feel that the, their presence is going to decrease crime, and I applaud that, not that they're necessarily sitting around every corner and trying to nab somebody, but their, their presence is enough to, there's still enough respect that it's going to decrease crime, I wish, I wish it was even more so, but I applaud you for that.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Obviously, I, I, just looking at these stats, you can see that there's still a lot of work to do, but you can see many trends trending down, which is really positive to see, I, and I appreciate it, that it speaks to a few things, it speaks to what's going on in our community, but it also speaks to the work that the RCMP are doing. So I want to just say thank you on behalf of council and our citizens for the tremendous work you do and the sacrifices that you make to make our city safer, and we appreciate that very much, so with that, anything in closing?
Just, I just want to thank you for all your support, um, this has been the group that I've worked with since I've been here, and I just very appreciate everything you've done for us, and all of you as councilors, thanks for your support, thank you for your supportive headway, and just everything you've done for us.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Workantene, just a question in regards to setting up priorities, I know Staff Sergeant Lenega talked about that, when is the time that we normally do that, is that in fall, or is that?
Well, the, the, the list of the 2018-2019 annual performance plan has been provided for council on page 39 of the agenda package. It is up to council. Council has chosen to do both options, either address them today, or defer them to, to another time after they've given the priorities further consideration, it's up to council.
All right. Council, how would you like to proceed? Obviously, we've seen some tremendous success by what the RCMP are working on, are you comfortable with the, the present community priorities that are stated on page 40, or would you like time to discuss them, or should we allot them to another time for discussion? Thoughts? Counselor Swagster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think these are good priorities, these is what we've set the last, the last few years, and visibility of police, organized crime, property crimes, traffic, we've had this as our priorities for some time, there's still more work to be done in these areas, so I think it's reasonable that we continue with these priorities.
Thank you. Counselor Funk?
I would concur with Counselor Swagster, too, as you can see with the incident reports, because of these priorities, many of these incidents are going down, so they're, these priorities are working for us, they're working for our members, and I think, I think we should just go ahead and.
Can I take that as a motion, then? Thank you. Is there a seconder? Counselor Swagster, go ahead.
Yeah, no, we've had these, we've had these priorities for some time now, and they're working very well. Numbers are going down, we, we meet and get Staff Sergeant Lenega's report every month, and he's, he's working very, very hard, and he's, and he's working very hard at these priorities and bringing, bringing the incident reports down. He's also working very hard on traffic, and that is why sometimes the numbers are going up, because as they work hard on traffic, they're also finding more things wrong, and more, more offenders, and so that number will climb. Hopefully, it's going to go down as people find out that there is, there's a, a cost to crime. But I, I think that he's doing a great job with his members, his, his staff and his members, and I think we need to just get behind him, give him these priorities again.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would concur, I mean, the fact is, is that we have seen some impressive work by the RCMP the last number of years, under the leadership of Staff Sergeant Lenega. These are our priorities as a council, these are areas that we have identified, we want police visibility, we want to address organized crime, that is why we had given the funding for the GIS unit, which is active and involved and is making a difference. We recognize the importance of cracking down on property crime, and the traffic numbers are quite clear that this is a priority of the city, and it will continue to be, so for all these reasons, it makes sense to, to continue with these priorities.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I just do want to add that early in June, cancel the date because we don't want to alert too many people, but we are having a traffic safety date, and that, too, will be a time when we can, we can show the safety energy.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried, thank you. Council, I think we are very lucky to have the, the staff that we have here and the Staff Sergeant that we have here, we, we seek clear communication, we seek clear results, very good. All right, let's move to number five, the, sorry, number six, the variation V 2018-06, this is in regards to 66 Edgewood Street, on page seven. I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing, Mr. Workantene.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is application for variance file V dash 2018 dash 06, for property with civic address of 66 Edgewood Street. The owner and applicant for the variance is Theodore Sawatsky. Purpose of the variance is twofold, firstly, to allow a rear yard setback of 12.35 feet, whereas the RLD residential low-density zone requires a minimum of 25 feet, and secondly, to allow a shed to be within 1.8 feet of the rear property line, whereas a minimum of 2 feet is required in the residential low-density zone. The applicant has constructed a sunroom on the property, and the addition is too close to the property line. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There are two pieces of correspondence that council had placed in the agenda package, and a third objection has been received that council has been provided in their mail bins earlier this week. With respect to, to the, to the application, the rear yard variance arises due to the construction of the house addition on the subject property, and I would, from an administration perspective, matters relating to building permits are not normally considered as part of a variance application. However, an extenuating circumstance with this file is that the required building permit for the completed addition has not been obtained. Administration is not prepared to consider the application for a permit until the matter of the variance has been considered by council. And as far as the implications of the, of the consideration, should the variance be approved with a building permit considered, it is anticipated that significant deconstruction of the addition would be necessary to evaluate the status of the structure and foundation in accordance with city and building code requirements, and therefore, administration is recommending firstly to approve the requested rear yard setback for the shed, subject to the owner relocating the fence for the property to be within the property boundaries, and secondly, the recommendation is that council deny the requested variance for the addition.
Thank you. Do we have someone representing the applicant here, or the applicant? Do we have someone here representing the applicant, or the applicant themselves? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to further object to this file? Or questions?
I, I'm.
You do? Please take the podium.
Sorry.
State your name and address.
My name's Kim Coop, and I live on Alderwood Crescent, so I received a notice. I didn't know you could just put a letter in your bin, so I came in person.
You can come here, yeah.
Um, so I, just to clarify, it's been a while since I've been at a council meeting, but is what he's saying that he's asking for you guys to deny the sunroom part, and for them to take it down, or what, I'm sorry, I just want clarification as to that part?
The, the, Mr. Workantene, do you want to clarify what your recommendation is?
In like plain terms?
In plain terms, the recommendation from administration is essentially yes, to, to that city council deny the requested variance for the addition. That would result in further requirements to deal with the addition that has not obtained the required permit.
Okay, so we saw the structure go up to the house, and have any of you driven by it? Okay, so there's just a lot of things that probably don't meet code, so there's no overhang, the vinyl siding is not attached properly, it's expanded in heat, things like that. The rafters, when they went on, they were about every six inches apart, so probably spent twice as much money on the rafters if they could have just built it properly to begin with. So I don't want to knock anybody for what they're trying to do, but sometimes the process of following the rules just to build something properly, you know, if they would have got people to do it properly with what they spent on what they did, they could have probably got a pretty decent sunroom that met whatever the city's codes were. So I didn't know you guys had driven by, because I had pictures on my phone to show you, but that was all, I just, it just doesn't really, there's too many things that don't look like they met building codes.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else wishing to object or have any questions? Yeah, please state your name and address.
My name is Maria Gay, I live on Fernwood Bay. It seems this is not the first time this has happened in this community where people build without permits, because one, you need then either to meet spec, you need codes, you need inspectors, and whatever, and then, all of a sudden, they need a variance, or there's a mess, and people complaining, and these people then feel, oh, poor me, it will cost me to tear down my structure, or move some fencing, or something else. If they followed proper rules, then this would not have happened. Why are, is there nobody that checks up on these things beforehand? Who constructed it? Because usually a construction company, or someone that's doing rentals would know this, but people like to just go ahead and do it, and pay the consequences later, and I'm glad you have to make the final decisions, but really use wisdom and common sense when you deal with these people, and tell them, maybe, is some, somebody going to check this now and inspect it if it is up to code?
Thank you, that, thank you for your comments.
I hope it's sufficient.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else wishing to object or have any comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Swagster?
I'll make the motion that we approve the administration recommendation, that we deny the requested rear yard setback for the addition, and approve the rear yard setback for the shed, subject to the owner relocating the fence for the property to be wholly within the subject property boundaries.
Thank you, is that a seconder from Counselor Siemens? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's an old saying that, you know, it's, it's better to beg forgiveness than to ask permission, that saying does not hold true when it comes to getting a building permit or a variance. In this case here, this is a clear case of, of someone not following the rules of the city. The reality is that when you're going to build onto your house, when you're going to add on a sunroom, you need a permit, you need to, you need to make that application, and this individual did not, did not get a permit. We see here that the individual was notified on June 6, 2017, received a letter, that we have a copy of here, telling them that they're in, that they need a permit, that they're in violation, and the construction just continued. And so now we're faced with this situation, and there's no obligation for us to approve this, and if that means the sunroom's coming down, well, then it's coming down. The message here is that if you want to expand your house, you want to add on to it, don't assume that you're going to get a variance just because it's already there, that's not a good enough reason. And so it makes sense to, to go with the administration recommendation here, and just adding on to about, you know, the fence not, you know, not even being within the subject property boundaries, that has to move, and so that's subject to, you know, that, that's a condition of them allowing the .2 of a foot we're allowing for the shed, which is a very minor variance. But still, these are, these are significant issues here. And I should add, to not even show up to the public hearing, that makes the decision even more straightforward. If you're going to apply for a variance, no matter what it is, you should be here in order to answer questions, because I had questions, and now they're not getting answered, so this is what we should do.
Thank you. Counselor Siemens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's same feelings as Counselor Swagster, very disappointed in the fact that the applicant did not show up to address the issues before council, there are more questions as well. I also drove by the property, and I agree with comments made, as the visual aspect is, is one thing, but also the construction. We don't know whether it was built to code, we set standards as a city for a reason, so that we can address the building codes, the foundation, all the different aspects of an addition. This isn't a sunroom more than it is an addition to a house, so, and it, like they use for. Again, last June, there was notice, there was ample notice given to the builder or the homeowner to stop construction. Again, this February, this is a dangerous precedent, if we do allow this variance, number one, is one thing, but if we allow, it's just a precedent now that we say that it's okay to do this. It's not okay to do this. We have a lot of the rules and regulations as, you know, within our bylaws set forward, and one of the objections that we received is from the developer who developed that, that area, and very concerned, because that's not the type of construction that he is looking for, that they were looking for when they developed that area, so I think it is absolutely within our right and what we should be denying the request for the variation.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is so many things wrong with this file. Among them are that there was no, no engineering done, it was simply built on, on piers, and so I think there is, like, and I, I agree with what's already been said, the applicant, you would have expected the applicant to be here to defend his case, and there may be information that we don't know, but if, all the information that we have would point to the fact that somebody blatantly went against what our, our codes are, and so I couldn't support them going ahead with this, so I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing?
No.
Council, I obviously hear what you're saying, and it is clear that if you want to build in the city, and you want to build well, you're welcome. If you want to not ask permission and go forward without the required approvals and engineering and expert advice, it won't work, and this is a clear indication that that will, that is the case, this should not be approved. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Mr. Workantene, just a clarification, when it comes to that structure itself, what is the process now that takes place?
The results of council's decision will be provided to the city's building inspection staff, who will then proceed to work with the owner to correct the deficiencies as required. With the addition not being approved, the builder will have no option but to, to remove the structure.
Thank you. All right, we now move to 6B, which actually has been postponed, is that correct, Mr. Workantene?
I'm sorry?
6B, Rockwood Street, 426?
Uh, yes, that, yes, the, the applicant has, has requested a postponement of that file to a future council meeting.
Thank you. Then we'll move to 8A, the Royal Canadian Mounted Police, okay, well, we've actually gone through that already. We'll move to 8B, that's the 127 Industrial Road, on page 41. Mr. Workantene?
This is an offer to purchase that is being provided to council for its consideration for the sale of 127 Industrial Road. The offer to purchase has been provided, I'm sorry, by Hijack LTD, for the purchase price of $75,000. This is the list price to the property. All of the relevant documents related to the offer to purchase and the subsequent sales agreement are provided in the package for council. If approved, the possession date would be July 15th. Recommendation is to approve.
Thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Fair?
Move to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion?
No, I think it's all said, we've got these properties and incubators, and it's great for people to be able to affordably get into it.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything further from council? All those in favor? Counselor Fair, you have a declaration?
Yep.
Thank you, you have to.
Conflict of interest on.
Potential conflict of interest, okay, thank you. This is page 50, this is in regards to a tender in regards to side load refuse truck. 8C, page 50, Mr. Workantene?
This is a, a tender that was recently issued by the city of Steinbach for the purchase of a. for the, uh, purchase of a, uh, side-load refuse truck. It's, uh, for residential services. Uh, the, uh, tenders were opened on April sixth, two thousand eighteen, with three bids having been received. Uh, based on the review and information that is provided in the information package for council, recommendation, uh, is that option two, bid by shoe pack, uh, for the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-three dollars plus applicable taxes, uh, be, uh, be approved.
Thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Penner?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Swagster. Any discussion?
Nope. It looks like it's under budget, so that's a good thing.
Very good. Anything further from council? All right, call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. We have nine A, we have the counts payable in the back of the book. You've all had a chance to review that. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Councillor Penner, seconded by councillor Funk. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. We have the financial statements ending April thirtieth. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Councillor Funk, seconded by councillor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? All right, on page fifty-six, we have the building permits. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you. Move, second, councillor Fair, seconded by councillor Siemens. Any discussion? Call, call for the question. All those in favor? Nine D, the business licenses, on page fifty-eight. Can I have a motion? There's a motion on page fifty-eight. You've all had a chance to review those. Councillor Penner, seconded by councillor Siemens. Any discussion?
No.
Anything further from council? All those in favor? We have the excavator licenses on page fifty-nine. Can I have someone move that motion, please? Councillor Fair and councillor, councillor Fair and councillor Funk. Is there, is there a motion? Is there any discussion on the motion?
No.
Can you explain to me why we give excavator licenses?
The ones digging in our yard with it.
All those in favor?
He persuaded me.
Carried. All right, we have first reading of bylaw twenty-ninety-nine, that's the, the official community plan, on page sixty-seven. Mr. Workantene, I'll just give you, get you to briefly, uh, state, state a few, uh, statements here, and then we'll move forward.
Uh, sure. Uh, the, uh, one of the, uh, the two primary planning documents that, uh, the city of Steinbach reviews and approves on a regular basis is the official community plan. Uh, this is seen as the, uh, primary strategic planning and land use document, uh, for the city of Steinbach. Uh, the, uh, Planning Act requires the city to review this document at least once every five years. Uh, although the city, uh, recently did so, uh, in two thousand fifteen, the recent annexation that was approved by the province, uh, has, uh, prompted, uh, further review at this time. Uh, and, uh, for the primary purpose of addressing particular land use policy within the newly annexed area, uh, that, uh, that was approved, uh, the, uh, summary of the changes, which council has reviewed at committee, uh, is provided on pages seventy-one and seventy-two. Uh, the, uh, changes are not significant, uh, however, they, uh, the, uh, the, uh, most important or most, uh, critical ones are listed on those pages. Uh, the, uh, recommendation from administration is that city council approve first reading, uh, of bylaw two-zero-nine-nine, uh, and, uh, if, uh, council wishes to proceed, uh, the, uh, public hearing would be, uh, scheduled for later in June.
Thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Fair, move to approve. Seconded by councillor Swagster. Go ahead, councillor Fair.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I know this has to come to second, third reading, but I want to commend, uh, our administration for working with the people in the new, uh, annexed area. Uh, there were, I know that there were some people that had some concerns, and, and administration worked with them, and I, I believe that they, uh, came to a very, uh, good, uh, conclusion with them, and so I, I have to applaud them.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Swagster?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, the official community plan obviously sets our, our direction as a city. Uh, it's sort of that broader level, uh, that broader level picture, and obviously, we need to update it because of the fact that we've added, uh, a couple thousand new acres to, uh, of property to the city, and so it makes sense that we review it. Uh, the, uh, we have made a few changes, uh, in terms of, uh, our preliminary discussions in regards to requiring, uh, concept plans for developments in the, in the reserve area, the development reserve and such, and a few other changes, too. And I look forward to hearing, uh, from the general public, both from the, uh, the new citizens of Steinbach, and also people from established areas, in regards to what they think of our community plan.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, anything in closing? No. Council, uh, obviously, with the new annexed area in the city of Steinbach, it has created some work for us, but pleasant work. Uh, we get to look at, uh, set the direction for our city through this document. This document is important, it's a guiding document for us as councils who make decisions. Uh, when it comes to the process, I think, uh, this has been a good process. First of all, for us to review it, second of all, for administration to review it, and third of all, to actually have that open house and get feedback, and we got a lot of feedback, very specifically from the new residents of, of our city, and some of those, like councillor Swagster mentioned, were, were adopted in, uh, some of the changes for first reading. And so, uh, we will go through now a public hearing process, which is, again, wanting to hear further from people, and I think it's, uh, a good process that we've got, we've been engaged in, and obviously, it allows for us to tweak the document, to make sure it's, uh, accurate and, and good for the growth of our city. Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. Mr. Workantene, you say it's, uh, middle of June or end of June that we will have, uh, public hearing?
Uh, it, uh, I believe it's June nineteenth.
Thank you.
Is the second council meeting of June.
Thank you. Council will now go to nine G, that's the Community Places Grant application, on page seventy-four. Community Places, uh, of course, is the granting process that now municipalities are involved with, uh, choosing, and so look forward to seeing this application, if you approve it. Would, uh, would you like to move, uh, a motion to, uh, apply? Thank you. Uh, councillor Funk, seconded by councillor Penner. I may as well just look over here all the time for my-
(laughing)
Uh, any discussion?
Uh, just, just quickly, through you, Mr.-
Thank you.
This is a program that we have through the city, where we renew our playgrounds, and this is money that's available from the province that we can apply for, and I think